For which stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Any other additions or deletions? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Most may to accept the agenda presented.
Seconding. All in favor, signify saying aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Okay, next item, public comments. Lauren Taylor.
I'd like to wait to try and get that on the budget.
Okay, alright.
Warren, you do mean for your appropriation, not sure, but okay.
Additional appropriation.
Okay, alright. Just to clarify, anybody listen?
Next we have minutes from Pam Goffin at September 27, 2022. Pam Goffin, October 19, 2022. And then Christina Hammack from January 3, 2023. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes?
There's also January 5.
I didn't see the January 5.
Sorry, January.
Also January.
That was the joint meeting at the animal shelter.
I wasn't there. I missed that. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
I did, I have a correction from January the 3rd. It says in the minutes, they state that I seconded a motion made by Keith or Randy McBrer. However, it was actually Lynn, you probably didn't hear it because she was down here.
Okay.
And also Earl abstained, so it should have been 6-0-1. And Canton Economic Development, it says the motion passed 3 to 0, but it was actually 7 to 0.
Yeah. Also, wasn't there a, on the internal audit? Was that right?
Table the Parks Board.
I think it was the Solid Waste.
Solid Waste, yes, that's a correction. Paul Malone got the four votes and I got the three.
Okay.
Right.
I think it'll be easier me sitting here this time than last year.
You were way over there.
Yes, I was way over there.
That's, that's all I have. If you want to take those individually or at least last years together and then...
I think we'll take last years together, September 27 and October 19. All those in favor approving, signify saying aye.
I will abstain from 19. I was out of state.
Aye. I guess we have...
I will abstain from the September 27 and October 19.
You can vote for them, but you don't have to. So I guess that's two of us voting.
Paul Malone.
Paul and me. And the same goes for October 19. All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's two to zero here. Now for the January 3, 2023 minutes, all those in favor approving?
With those changes.
With those changes.
Aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Next we have Christine, Chris with the auditor.
Did you, now we're going to the...
Of PCDC.
Oh, PCDC funding.
Did you do January 5?
Yeah, we did January 5.
PCDC.
Okay, on the PCDC funding, it was always the intent, when we paid off the bonds in, what was it, August? For the special, the special detention center bonds. At that time, that decreased our tax by 0.5% and at that time we increased our, more of the increase was the economic development tax by 0.05%, which was there to be used for funding of long-term building maintenance in the future for all county buildings. The previous council, our commissioners are all aware of that, the Republicans are too, the county attorney was, and we would need to amend the edit plan so the percentages would fall in place so that that 0.05 would be going to the, to the building maintenance of all the county buildings. And it would probably, by doing that, it would increase it by about 120,000 that we would be adding each year into that building maintenance fund. And it's totally for major, like a roof or a boiler or something like that would go out. It's not hard to just, you know, replace a window pane or something like that. But all that needed to be done was the edit plan needed to be amended. And for some reason it never got done. So in order to do that, we would have to adjust, and I don't know, I'd say at this time, we cannot approve the funding until that edit plan has been amended.
David, I make a motion that until the edit plan is amended and the commissioners update their contract that they signed at the end of the year, that we table any action on the PCDC at this time. Until that edit plan is all worked out.
So does that mean you'll send it back to the commissioners?
Absolutely.
Then they'll figure that out and then send it back to us for funding?
Right. Correct. I mean, we have no idea what kind of money we're talking, you know? It's going to change the dollars and we can't approve something with them with just the, we'll take what you give us. I mean, we can't go with that, it's got to be in writing.
Well, if I, once I go back and change the percentages, if they stick with the same way they've been doing it, the 20%, it would decrease the funding from 260 to 235 for the PCDC based on the estimated income that they're projecting that we receive for the local income tax. And I don't know if the commissioners intend to keep that percentage the same, that's up to them.
I think we need to send, in my opinion, we need to send them figures to the commissioners, see if the commissioners are going to stay on that percentages. Then get them dollar amounts in the contract.
But basically what it amounts to is, like the PCDC's percentage would go from, if it's kept the way it is, it would go from point 20 to point 18. So they would still be getting, when you take the point 18 times the 55 cents, they're still getting the point 1, which is of the 50 cents, when it was 50 cents. So we begin, then that 117,000 would be coming to the county for the building maintenance.
So David, you're saying that, I just want to make sure I understand that, if this edit plan is not amended, the fund that was intended to receive money for a county building maintenance will receive zero and all the other funds will receive a raise? I mean, basically because the percentages come out of the total when the total's higher?
Well, yeah, if you don't include the building maintenance, you're not going to get, you're going to get zero.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, I mean, right now it's not included. So we need to make sure that it goes back to the commissioners. So that that is corrected, the edit plan's corrected, so that all the proper percentages come out and all the dollar amounts.
Right.
Makes sense.
The commissioners need to follow what we set up in the edit fund. Because we agreed last year for the edit fund with that 0.05.
Everybody was, knew of this, the county attorney did, like I said, the commissioners did. Everyone was aware that the edit plan had to be amended, everybody assured me there'd be no problem, it can be amended. And it just didn't get done.
I'd like to make a note that Commissioner Cole actually brought this up in December at the meeting.
Yes.
When it was before the commissioners, that this had to be changed before the contract should be signed and moved forward to us. But it went through anyway, so.
So it's just, we're just behind, we've got the court before the horse, I think.
Because the bottom line is Keith made a motion to table this until we get all our numbers correct and goes back to the commissioners and then come back to us.
Is it, is it proper to table the motion or to send it back, just?
I mean, we got, you know, we got all these people here, they're wanting some kind of action on it.
Well, don't we need to send it back, to make a motion to send it back to the commissioners?
Yeah, table it and send it back to them, correct.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify, or raise your right hand?
Aye.
Five zero. So we'll take, we'll send it back to commissioners and then at the next meeting, hopefully we'll be able to do the funding at that time.
Yeah, then I'll have everything in writing.
It might take a little bit, I guess if the edit plan, I mean, that has to work through first, it might be two meetings.
It could be two meetings. Our next item is, what, oh, yes.
Can I have a speak?
Yes.
My name's Gary Cryble, I'm the Human Resources Manager for Willpaca Foundry. I understand the details, I understand the fine points, I understand that something was missed. We got to go back in time. But it's imperative that this goes quick.
We're going to do it as quick as we can, Gary, without a doubt. I mean, it's just something that slid through.
I understand all that.
I brought it up at the commissioners' meeting when they signed the contract.
Yep.
And I love that David and Aaron both and mentioned the dollars.
I understand all that.
You know, but I want everything in, I want everybody to be on the same page when we approve it.
I understand. But it's imperative that the PCDC have continuous funding to be able to do business. Because they're doing things for this county that none of us know about. I don't know about, I don't want to know about.
I don't think that there's anybody looking for an outside source and trying to pull the funding from them.
No, I'm not, I'm not worried about that. It just has to be as continuous as possible.
Sure.
So a delay here means a delay at commissioners', which means a delay coming back. Things just have to keep moving forward. And I just, as a business, as an employer in a county, who has spent more than $20 million last year in this zip code alone, business needs to continue with imperative county.
Right.
And it's from the restaurants to the subcontractors, to construction, to labor. It has to keep moving forward as seamlessly as possible.
We'll do everything we can without a doubt.
I appreciate your considerations for that.
Thank you.
David, do you remember last year, wasn't it signed, the contract was signed in March?
Yes.
Last year?
Yes, last year it was like March or something, so. I think we're all right. Any other?
Can I just real quick?
Yeah.
Come to the mic?
Please.
David Goffin, at Chair of the Oregon State Perry County Development Corporation, I just want to clarify. Of course, our expectation for our organization would continue, just keep doing what we've been doing with the expectation that when you get that number recalculated, that that's the number we'll work towards. So we see no reason not to continue, keep doing what we're doing and we appreciate it, like was known, the quicker the better.
Right.
To your point, we operated last year under the expectation that we would submit bills and be paid to keep doing our job. So we'll keep doing that, they're in the staff.
Alright, well, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Aaron. We'll beat last year's.
Are they here? Public Library? Perry County Library, is there someone here who can help us?
Would I represent the library?
To get some clarification.
Do you have anything other than that letter?
I do. So the library had brought a additional appropriation request in. And looking at this, basically what they had requested is the Perry County Public Library would like to request the ability to spend 315,000 from their rainy day fund. This amount is currently sitting in the rainy day fund and is needed for a new HVAC system and repairs, updates to the building and bookmobile. If requested amount is approved, it'll be dispersed directly from the rainy day fund. When I reached out on this, this is not an additional appropriation, so therefore it did not need to be advertised. It's just a transfer. So she stated that they were told they have to get permission from the council to spend these funds.
Do you know, did they get bids for this?
No, this is all I've got.
I mean, I just wondered if they got a bid or...
Two issues I have with it is, first off, they don't have two bids and they did not show up to me. So I don't...
I thought they were going to be here, I know via email I told them that they need to, you know, that that... I did receive an email from them today stating that they thought that this needed to be advertised, so asked if it could be moved to the February meeting. So I just need some clarification, being new to this situation. This is not an additional appropriation, State Board of Accounts, they got DLGF guidelines that I've looked at, whichever one it is, that additionals have to be advertised, transfers do not. So based on the letter that they've provided, they have these funds in the rainy day. So that would not be an additional appropriation, it would just be a transfer, so.
I would like to see their budget, how much is in their rainy day fund and how much they're wanting to take out.
And I'd like to do that.
I mean, I need more detail than just a flat figure in rainy day line.
Be nice if they showed up where we could ask them questions.
And like I said, yeah. They, they...
They maybe misunderstood.
Maybe the supervisor wanted it.
We brought this up for the last couple of months.
They could have misunderstood and thought they didn't need to be present.
Yeah.
Anytime somebody's wanting, any whatever, to have a representation here and have the paperwork either to us previously.
So Stan, you wanted two estimates, and then what were you stating?
What's that?
What were you stating you wanted?
I said I need more detail, I need to see the budget at the one, at how much money is in the rainy day fund. It's, it's...
At least two.
Because they're wanting 315...
That's a lot of money, 315,000 dollars, one estimate.
I have several questions also, but I'd like to direct them to whoever's in charge of this, so.
Can you quit and say down the floor?
I guess we're not here to chime in.
Yeah, I received a letter from Brett. This was after the fact for the...
I know, man, what did you, what kind of action, we're not going to take action on the library? Or we're going to table it, or there was no motion or anything, was there? I make a motion that we're, it's tabled.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, table the library.
Ask them to come to the next meeting.
Come to the next meeting.
Whoever that was.
All those in favor, signify saying aye.
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 Motion carries five zero.
It's just a lot of money to not know what's going on. After we had the, you know, board appointments, I received a letter from Brett Luttrell stating I've enjoyed the past four years in the Perry County Parks Board and appreciate the work the board is doing. As my term has expired, I would like to request the opportunity, sir, for another four-year term effective January 4, 2023. Thank you for your time and consideration, sincerely Brett Luttrell.
I think that appointment, David, you had sent the requirements around and it said it cannot be of the Republican Party. So do we know his political affiliation? I mean, did he list it? I mean, I didn't see.
What'd you say?
I think on the requirements that were always sent around, that Teresa always had, that followed through every year, there were certain boards that you had a political requirement. And this particular position is, cannot be of the Republican Party, so...
Brett is a Democrat appointee to the Sheriff's American Board.
If he was already settled on this, then he should have met the qualifications. He's just being reappointed, so it's the same position, so he must have already satisfied it. And if he says that...
It wasn't in the letter, so I can't assume what he might be.
Of the Parks Board? He was a Democrat appointee because we only got two Republicans on the Parks Board.
I think he's alright.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept his...
I'll second it.
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm just curious about, since we were supposed to re-advertise this, because for the deadline, nobody submitted. There was no letters of interest. And then we mentioned at the first meeting that we were going to re-advertise this, so what is the process for that? Do we re-advertise for a certain timeframe? Do we just say whoever puts their name in first or the previous appointment? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what's the actual process.
I would think normally we would put it on our website.
It's on the website?
It is on there.
It has.
So you just go until you get someone, is that, I mean, I'm just curious, I didn't, I've...
It would get a warm body once it comes in.
Okay, that's, I didn't know if there was a policy on that.
All those in favor, signify saying aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. These are not changed, have they? Okay, our next item is additional appropriations. And per State Board of Accounts, additional appropriations are not done until March 1st after you submit the previous year's financial report, which due 2nd 28. It was February 28th. I went back and looked at the last four years evidently, we've been doing constantly wrong because we've always had additional appropriations in January and February.
Is that a statute or is that a, I mean, is that a recommendation or? I think it's a good idea, I mean, I agree that it's a great idea, but I didn't know if it was like a law, like a statute?
I just know that I cannot enter any additional appropriations on Gateway until March 1st.
Maybe you can go ahead and do them, just not enter them?
Yeah, I was told that we should, per State Board of Accounts, you're not to do any additional appropriations until after your financial report for the previous year is done. So that was per State Board of Accounts, so.
So we do have one additional appropriation on here.
So we can approve it.
What's your projected date for the next...
2/28.
David, I'm going to say, I'm going to comment on that, that I don't think it has been done wrong either the last four years, three, four years, because I submitted them into Gateway and there was never a problem as far as we...
You went ahead and actually submitted them?
In January and February, yes.
I went, I went back four years and we've always done it, so...
Yes, and I submitted them and never had a problem, so I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that, no, that it had not been done wrong.
Okay.
It's read out on State Board of Accounts and says not till March 1st.
Maybe they changed some process.
They could have.
Yeah, but I say, because I submitted them and never had a problem.
Maybe just changing it.
They've changed it, right?
We could go ahead and approve it and just not enter it in Gateway till March 1st, it's not...
That'd work, I'd assume. So we have additional appropriation, coroner, for $8,000 for autopsy fees.
You probably need to increase this.
Yeah, yeah, work on that budget.
Next year the budget is all over.
Next year's budget's got to be worked.
Actually, right now, I am $605 in the red on autopsies. We've had three autopsies already this year and a budget of $5,000 did not cover three autopsies.
How many autopsies did you last, last year?
Last year we did 11, year before that nine, and year before that 11.
Okay, so you need to be figuring about 12 for your budget.
And actually, last year we did 11 that we was charged, but there was 12 autopsies, there's 13 autopsies done. One of them was for prison, one was for Warwick County, they paid their own. As far as what came out of our pocket, there was 11 of them.
Because the budget you requested, you couldn't do three autopsies.
No.
So your last three years averaged it?
Yeah, our last years, you know, 30, 30 autopsies, 31 autopsies in the last three years, so.
And you've been requesting what to fund?
Well, I come back, one, in 2020, I came back and asked for 5,000 the first time, then 7,000 the second time. 2021, I asked for 7,000.
And average autopsy is costing varies, I don't...
It varies, the ones this time, one of them was 1,707 dollars because he prorated the traveling time because he had another autopsy in another county. The other two was 1,940 dollars each, now that's went up over 2021's prices.
Well, he's raised his price $200 in the last three weeks.
Well, in the last month.
Because we talked about it, our last meeting, it was 1,700.
20,000, 1,900.
Yeah, so, and if we, and the problem, we've only got one pathologist that will show up here. If we have to take the body to Evansville, we have to pay Evansville Coroner's Office a fee for using their autopsy room. And then we have the pathologist out of Western Kentucky, his cheapest is like 2,150.
Does he even come over here anymore? Pardon? Does he even come over here anymore, that went from Kentucky?
He will go to Evansville only, no place else. And the only other one we got is at Terre Haute.
Okay, I was going to say Terre Haute.
If you have to go to Terre Haute, that's going to tie.
You got to bump up your budget next year.
Hey Warren, is this 8,000 take care of the first quarter or the, or six months?
I don't know, let's go along.
No. Because, but you'll be ahead, ahead of it a little bit with this 8,000.
I'm hoping, but, yeah, at any given time.
Yeah, oh, I know that, yeah.
Like, we've had three in, actually, we've had three in 23 days, so.
You're 600 dollars in red right now.
605 dollars in red.
Do you know about how many outstanding bills you have?
I don't have any autopsies, except that.
Autopsy, there are no...
I turned claims in, I turned claims in today for, yeah, 5,605, I turned the claim in today, so.
That comes out of separate accounts, autopsy stays, it's equipped.
Warren, can you explain like how you determine who gets an autopsy and who the county pays for and who pays for their own?
I've got a whole list right here for everybody, if you want to pass those out. There are certain guidelines that the state beckons to, wouldn't need to do an autopsy. There's times it's caught, it's, the coroner's office caught. Actually, if we recover, find the body that's maybe been in a house for three or four days, if nobody actually seen that person fall, they recommend an autopsy. We have not been, done autopsies because we get hold of the doctor and the pharmacy and find out what kind of medication is on, what their medical problems are. And we'll get their medical records and bring them to the office and then we'll make a determination at that time whether we're going to do an autopsy or not. So it, it varies.
I was just curious how that was determined.
I think that, that would probably explain fairly well when autopsy is recommended and when maybe it's recommended.
And this is from the state?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful, I just always wondered, I figured suspicious, you know, activity, all that point, if you think something's suspicious.
A person is found and there's no witnesses to help when they went down, an autopsy should be done, but like I said, same time, we go back to their medical records and talk to the doctors. And same way with hospice cases. On a hospice case, if the hospice nurse or the family or the doctor feels maybe there's something else besides being on hospice caused to death, then we could look into doing an autopsy.
Any other questions? Are you through?
Okay, well, now that's, I'll go ahead and do the rest of it. It, you know, it seemed like some of the nurses...
Did we approve the 8,000?
No, I think we had...
I'll make the motion if we approve the 8,000, we got to pay it simple as that.
Yeah, state statute says you have to.
I made your motion, you made the motion.
You already made it.
I guess you slipped it.
I'll second it, yeah, I was done.
All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Now continue.
Okay, well, there's some confusion about who's running the coroner's office. It's not acceptable for my staff to be confronted by somebody else about how the coroner's office is being run. I think it's unprofessional, disrespectful, and it's concerning to my staff members and myself. My office door is always open. Previous administrations, I've asked all the council members and the commissioners to come out anytime to the office. The last four years, I made that request, I only had two councilmen show up. Mr. Malone showed up and Mr. Bymaster several times. So if you have any questions, I'd like for you to come to me and come out to the office and just see. As far as the budget goes... As far as the budget goes, compared to other counties, we're running on a shoestring budget at the coroner's office. And the only thing I have ever asked for in the last three years has been funding for autopsies. Rest of the stuff, we might have to move money around, but we've always covered it all. So I'm just asking for, if you have any questions, come to me, ask me about it. I'll show you the books. It's an open door. My main concern is my staff and the community.
Warren, I got a question right now. How many, how much room do you have, like, for bodies to put in storage in?
One.
Just one?
And that's something, whenever I find out what ARP's will, when the county offices can apply, I'd like to apply for ARP funding for a four-person cooler. There's always, there's already a place at the Armory to put it. And the reason before a four-person cooler, when a person passes away at the hospital, the hospital cannot release that body until a donor network says it can be released. The problem is, a lot of times, usually it's at least four hours. I've had one person lay out there for over eight hours before we could even get the body out of the hospital. And I think that's very disrespectful for the deceased and their family. If we had a cooler, it would put a little bit more time-consuming for my deputies than myself, because we would remove the body from the hospital, put it in the cooler until the donor network says, we're coming after it or you release it to the funeral home. But them laying out there in one of the emergency rooms, they shouldn't be there over an hour at the most.
Well, I'll take you up on going to see in the space what you got, and since I'm on the ARP committee too.
Okay.
Saying, I wanna, I wanna see what you're talking about, basically.
When the hospital spent forty million dollars, they would have had an appropriate place for that.
I've talked to them, I've asked them, because the old cooler that we used to have that broke down, we used to have two coolers.
That's where my question was headed, was what happened to the second cooler?
The old cooler broke down last December twenty twenty-one. I paid two hundred dollars to get it fixed. Two weeks later, it broke down again, and the estimate next time was going to be a thousand dollars. That cooler's not worth a thousand dollars.
What, what do you project a four-person cooler costing?
It's gonna be probably between sixty-five hundred and seven thousand.
Why, why wouldn't that stainless steel cooler be worth a thousand dollars?
It is not, it's not appropriate to use. First of all, it takes two people to even hold the lid up, because whoever made that cooler, it's not a commercial-made cooler. I think they took a freezer and converted it. They put the door where the door swings up over the top, and that door is so heavy, one person cannot load or unload anybody. It takes at least two.
I don't know how many years it got used by previous coroner and his deputies, but.
It was used.
I think we put bodies in and out of it.
It was used several years ago.
Farmer deputies there too that used to put them in and out.
Yeah.
I'm not saying.
But it's not, it's only good for one person. At times, we need more than.
Yeah, I know, but if you had two one-person coolers, you'd have room for two hot.
Yeah. But I couldn't see spending money out of budget for something that, as old as it is, it's not gonna last. I even offered to give it to a hospital when it's still running. Hospital didn't want, they didn't have room for a cooler. And like you said, I don't know why when they built the hospital, there wasn't a morgue built in the hospital to hold the bodies, but.
I mean, I always did think it was tacky at the old hospital to leave a deceased in an emergency room. I mean, that wasn't what emergency rooms built for.
Well, anybody's been in an emergency room at Hurricane Hospital, there's curtains and doors. And I've seen times people walk by and pull the curtain open to look, see who's in there. That's disrespectful. I mean, that's all you can say about it.
That's just not the place. But I don't know that it's the county's place to furnish that place with hospital leave, but that's something else we can talk about.
If they die at the hospital, the coroner's office still has to do the case on. So in return, I don't feel we should have to leave that body there, because I've had nurses threaten to call police on me because I said I was going to remove the body and take it to the office, and they told me I couldn't. So the only way I can get around that is I'm making a coroner's case where we're going to do an investigation, then I've got access to that body. So it's, it's kinda confusing with the hospital. They, they'd like to get the bodies out quicker too, but until the donor network approves it. And the problem is, the donor network, a lot of times, can't get a hold of them next to camp. They might try and try, and that's what happened with the one lady that was there for over eight hours. I thought I told the donor's network and said, hey, we need to do something with this lady. You will not release the body. Well, we can't get a hold of her husband. I said, her husband's ninety-seven years old, he's hard-hair, he can't hear the phone. We need to do something. Well, the donor's network said, we'll give you permission to go ahead and release the body to the funeral home, and the funeral home was in another county, so then they had to come down and pick the body up. So it, it's.
It's not an easy job.
It's a bad situation, that's all I can say.
It's not an easy job.
Thank you, Warren.
Thanks.
Thanks, Warren.
Thanks, Warren.
Thank you.
Next, we have transfers?
Yes, I have these listed as transfers. I did advertise them just to be on the safe side on this, just being new on this. As you guys had approved at the last meeting, the difference in one of my deputy's salaries and the administrative salary to be brought over to the administrator office, so that is the breakdown there. And then we have the transfer within the prosecuting attorney's office from the general to the four D. These are actually appropriation reductions and re-appropriating to a new, but they're actually transfer, transferring. So that's why I went ahead and advertised them, but these are the transfers that you guys approved at the last meet, or the, for the last meeting. And then with the Health Department, with their funds, they have to carry over in new fund numbers, so these are the transfers to the new funds.
Is someone here from the Health Department? Are these new?
No. No.
Don't we have ever seen them before?
They're supposed to be transferred over every year.
Did we last year?
One of them. There's just two.
Are those the only two?
Those are the only two, right on, yeah.
There's only two?
There's only two.
What'd you say? Oh. Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve it. Are you approving all these transfers, I guess, we can do more than one?
I'm gonna take the last day, the one separate, the fund one one six eight. I don't know what that fund, I haven't seen it. I've got a budget, but, but it doesn't show the one one six eight fund, so.
It's there.
It says local health, make it.
What's, what's, you got a carryover? What is that?
That's where we carry it.
Yeah, come here.
That's the information.
I'm Danielle Caneblin, the registrar of budget and finance for the Health Department. And the eleven sixty-eight is our maintenance fund. We've had that for well over sixteen years. We get it every year. And same way with the trust fund, the local Health Department Trust Fund. At the end of the year, if whatever monies we don't spend, it has to roll over into a cash carryover because it starts a new grant cycle starting January 1st.
So this is actually just moving over to twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
What happened to the one in two thousand twenty-two? You said only one, or you only had one?
Well, it was, it was part of this here amount.
Oh, okay. I wondered if it wasn't included in here.
Yeah. So the.
So it just stayed there and then?
It stayed there, and then beginning of this year, I wrote everything over, so it'll come up to a zero balance January 1st of each year. And then in January and in July, we get the money, once in January, once in July, and then that's what it is every year.
I'd like to get a copy of that. There are probably letters out there in our, in our system that.
Is it a different number? Is it always been?
No, it's all, local health, it's always eleven sixty-eight.
Okay.
But the trust fund is a different number every year, except starting this year, it'll stay nine one seven oh.
So what grants go into that?
That is the grant, it's the local.
Okay.
It used to be the tobacco settlement.
Okay.
That's what it used to be called, the tobacco settlement grant.
Thank you, Danielle.
Now that I know more about it, we can take a more, if you want.
Okay.
I'll make that motion if nobody else has.
Key, sorry, Mary.
I'll second that.
Alders in favor, same by the same eye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I can't hear it, I'm.
We need different, we need.
Okay. I wanted to bring to the council a suggestion of issuing each department head a credit card with policies. As we move on in time, the, our opportunities of sending, submitting checks for things is definitely decreasing. I honestly feel too, this will clean up a lot with claims, where if each department has a credit card, they have policies as far as, you know, spending and whatnot. And also, a lot of times, claims are just brought over just spurtly, you know? They, they use it, they bring it over. Where if, I think it will set up some organization where if they order something, they hold on to the claim with their credit card, they will get their credit card statement, itemize their credit card, where if there's a thousand dollars of charges on that credit card, there should be a thousand dollars of claims. It'll just clean up the system a little bit and just make my office a little bit more efficient on that. And like I said, we can't, there's very few that we can submit checks, and a lot of our employees are having to wait if they pay for something, because they have to pay for it with a credit card, that they pay for it on their own, they're having to wait a month to be reimbursed. Also, I've noticed just in the sixteen days that I've been here, my credit card has been asked to go here and then here and there, and then I have to keep track of who has it. So I feel our elected officials, our department heads are fully capable of managing their own credit card, and like I said, I feel it would clean up and keep it a little bit more itemized.
Is there a policy currently for credit cards?
I have not seen one, no.
I think it's, I think it's a super idea, because then you, a lot of times, you could write one check instead of twenty checks, maybe.
But I think it's gonna help as far as itemizing things.
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to write some policies on it, and these policies are gonna have to go to the handbook committee, because if you don't put any teeth in them policies, why write the policies? You cannot allow any.
Is it the annual committee or the commissioners, really? I mean.
It'll be both. It's gonna be both. I mean, the employee's handbook's gonna have to have the penalties of misusing the credit card.
Which is shocking if they have one.
You can't let, you know, somebody have a credit card.
And we might, and might just be a long time ago. I just know that right now, I have a credit card.
Do you have a list of who, how many credit cards we have out as a county?
I do know the Health Department has one, I have one, Highway Department has one, yes. That's all I know.
And Sheriff's Department's got some, don't you?
Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, Sheriff's Office.
We need to pull that out if, if there is a policy or, or have one written.
But it's gotta have some teeth on it.
Certain things you can use that card for.
And make sure they always pay it on time.
Right.
To hospital, if there was somebody who misused a credit card and they lost employment. And I'm not saying that that's.
Chris, you mentioned elected officials, like we, I don't need one.
Well, I'm talking more the departments and stuff.
Like the full-time.
You know, the court.
Right.
You know?
The prosecutor's office doesn't have one, and it becomes a real issue to go to training, signing up for training.
Without a doubt.
Hotels won't give us the tax exempt without the county credit card.
Yes.
And the county won't reimburse you or the tax that you paid, so you're out the tax.
And I know we had trial this past week, so they were coming back and forth, getting my card as far as stuff, and that's just too much work on them. And then, like I said, I like the idea of, instead of bringing your claims over just when you do it, keep your claims, and then they'll itemize their credit card statement and.
They present it to you.
I would like to see.
That's more detail of charging.
I would like to see all the credit card bills come to you to where you knew when to pay. Of course, after you get them a time or two, you'll know when they're due, and if somebody don't have it spinning, you can.
It's gonna be due one time.
They'll all be, yeah.
That's all same time.
It'll all one, it'll be, yeah, because we'll have ours, yeah, yeah.
The credit card will be due one, one time.
Yeah. I can pull the policy, I'm sure.
Okay.
With the fact that we've got four or five.
Actually, do we need to take on this tonight to?
Yep. If you're gonna approve for me to move forward with setting everybody up with a visa, right now, the visa's through German American for the ones that we have. So then I would just set up with each department head to have their own credit card, and so choose.
I think we need that. I'm just worried about doing that before we have a policy. If there really isn't a policy.
Randy, who's on the, from the council, is the, or from the commissioners? Who's on the employee handbook? Do you know which one of you commissioners is? Don't you agree that there needs to be some teeth from issues?
Well, you need to have a structure, because you can't ask people to call something on a business.
Yeah, exactly.
You need to let them know exactly what to report, you want it all in fair way.
So we need to probably make sure we have established policy procedures.
And then will I need the attorney to set up all that? Or is the, is the board, the committee, you wanna set up that?
What I would suggest, Chris, is reach out to another county, because we can't be the only one that has this issue. Look at some of their policies and how they handle them.
Yes.
The city's got credit cards too, don't you, Chris? How do you, can the county get a copy of your policy? Thank you. This, this happened, remember, he's over there.
Nothing to do with that.
I'm not charging, sorry. Five dollars. I knew it.
Next on agenda is Kevin.
And that's actually with me. No, I told him, he didn't need, he was with the commissioners. So the commissioners have now passed it on to you guys with the auditor's office taking over the administrative duties of the administrator. That did, back in December, we had discussion regarding the ADA and title, I forget title, it's actually Title VI Coordinator. And that has to be someone that's within, in the courthouse. Kevin deals a lot with disabled. I mentioned him in January, asking if he would be interested. He jumped right in with researching and pretty much ran with it. And I was like, okay, well, I haven't even got this approved yet, but let's go that route. But the commissioners did approve at the Monday meeting for Kevin to be the ADA Title VI, it's actually VI, not, did I do that right? Is that six or four? I can't remember.
That's, that's four.
Yeah, it's supposed to be that.
Yeah.
And so I am bringing to the council to pay him a thousand dollar stipend for his duties. Now with that, we'll have to, the commissioners want me bring to do a thousand dollars plus twenty percent to cover tax benefits. So that's what I am bringing to you guys.
So Chris, will this be a standalone stipend that can be, like, for the department, like, for this courthouse or whatever? So if he leaves, that it can be attached to someone else?
Correct.
If they decide to pick up that?
Correct. We're not gonna tie it to that veteran services. Yeah, it's not going to be tied to the veteran services.
Right.
It's just gonna be, he is currently.
It'd be like an attachment with the job description or duties, and, and that needs to be updated too, I guess.
And it'll be paid in, in December, I presume?
Well, I would say the first of the year, because the first of the year is when you have to do all that stuff. And like I said, he's already pretty much ran with it.
Nothing against Kevin, he's a buddy of mine, I like him, but it's quite the gamble paying somebody 365 days' money.
He, no, he's done it in January, you have to set everything up in January.
So he's, I mean, there's still more to it than that.
More to it, right.
This way, the thousand dollars would just be divided out by paycheck till the end of the year as he works and pays he would quit?
Yes, the thousand dollars plus that will go into, it's just, it's not gonna be his wages.
I just asked you, and I thought you said that you were gonna get paid in January first.
Well, we put it as a stipend to be on his wages.
You're gonna get the check January first, you know.
It'll start in January, it's.
So you actually have the stipend going with each wage.
Yes, it'll be included with the salary.
So we're talking 1,200 dollars, no, a thousand?
Yes, because they said the 20%, the commissioners stated, to add 20% for benefit tax benefits.
I'm just curious where the thousand came from, did you guys just work that out?
We haven't done that.
Come out, it'll come out of the administrative pay.
But I'm just, was wondering.
Out of the administrative pay that Chris's duties as, office has assumed, we should be able to take it out of that fund, or that money.
He did send around the ADA Title VI newsletter, and I thought it was really nice.
Yes.
And you know that it was.
I know he's already met with Greg Hendershaw on plan of action. Basically, you have to submit in January what all was done the previous year and what's your plan of action for the upcoming year. And then, at the end of 2023, we will say what of our plan of action we accomplished and what more. It's like a revolving thing. And it helps, we have to have this for grants. So, and whether we pay it as a, as a stipend, or whether we, when I talked to Kelly, we can pull that, transfer that in to payroll, and then just add it into his salary there.
Without paying taxes?
No.
Social Security?
No, we can put it into his salary, it will be. But that's what the extra 20% is for.
To cover it, I guess it did.
I like it being separate.
Separate.
Well, I don't mind if it's on his check, but the duties need to be separate so that, can you do that? I mean, that for the stipend, so that.
Well, it's gonna come out of a different fund, so yeah.
If he would leave, it could still be.
We can take it out of that, can we take it out of the administrative, the administrative?
That's where it was paid before.
Yeah.
That's where. I'll make a motion that we allow it, because Kevin knows, you know, if we have to have some construction done, he's done construction, so he deals, like you said, with the handicaps, so.
Okay, keep me in motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Call those some favors, things by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero.
The next thing I have is a quote from Lao that I submitted to you all. I did take this to the commissioners. I know it was spoke of in 2022, and we would like to move forward with this. This is a quote for remote access and also attachment feature on Lao. Lao, of course, is our software that we use for financials and property taxes. Currently, right now, the auditor's office and the treasurer's office are the only ones that have access to Lao, which requires a lot of our departments, unless they are, figure keeping track of their budget on their own, it requires them to come to our office a lot of times for information, to look up claims, everything. With this, all of our department heads will have view-only access to their budget. All of our commissioners and council members will have access to all budgets. So therefore, again, they'll have it at their fingertips, instead of having to wait for me or someone in auditor's office to get them that information. Also, with this, it will allow us to, with claims right now, just kind of, of course, we're not gonna go paperless completely or anything, but it'll also just be handy where, with a claim, we will scan and attach all receipts and supporting documents. So instead of having to go and look in a file, if you're questioning something, these supporting documents will be right on Lao when you're viewing the claim. So of course, with all of these enhancements comes cost, but I do feel this will help all of our county offices be efficient and be more informed, along with our commissioners and our council.
What does that cost?
Four thousand dollars annually.
Does it have the capability to run a report, once this gets started and you start putting invoices and receipts and all that? At the end of the month, could we just run a report, instead of going in and looking day by day, right before my meeting? You know, if I wanna take the week before and look through everything to make sure.
You'll be able to pull fun reports. My silence does not work all the time.
Oh my God, how embarrassing.
There's hard silence, I promise.
Turn to wake me up, I told you, wake me up at a certain time.
I just would like to have a report, and I think if it has capability to do that, instead of going through filing cabinets, it definitely brings efficiency.
Yes, you guys will be able to pull fun reports, you'll have view, everybody will be view only, they won't be able to edit or do anything, but basically, any fit, huh? Yeah, there's no edit, it's view only, but you guys will be able to pull any reports. It just makes it more efficient for you, instead of having to wait on me or.
Right.
I just think it's, and it, this was discussed in 2022, this is not, so just moving forward.
So each department will be responsible for putting their claims and receipts in?
We're not gonna do that yet. Eventually, we possibly could, you know, depending what, what avenue we reach, we don't wanna put the cart before the horse. But it'll still bring, right now, this is just basically for them to be able to look and view their budget, and if they need to look something, for research. We do have the possibility, and it might be something in the future, like I said, we don't wanna put the cart before the horse, or. That, we could do that to where, instead of bringing paper claims, they would actually get on, fill out their claim, attach their supporting documents, it'd come our way.
Where's the money gonna come from?
The 4,000?
Out of your budget?
Mine?
I mean, do you have money either, if you don't have the money?
Yeah, we do.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, we're good, we're good with that.
Chris, is there gonna be like a show and tell for us when we use this software?
Yes, Lao is super friendly too. I, like, I, I've really liked working with Lao, you can call them anytime. I call them on a daily basis right now, because I'm still learning how to pull reports and knowing where to pull things. Super helpful, you can, they're fine for you just to call them, or you can email them, and they'll send you screenshots and everything. But yes, Lao has already said that they will maybe do like two sessions, we actually talked this week, that if this goes through, do a couple sessions of, you know, training on it, where, you know, if you're not able to make one, you can do another, but even after that training.
So we'll be able to VPN with our own deep logins for the window, and we just to review things that we need, or we won't have to come ask you like I've had to do recently.
Yep, yep, that's how it works.
All right.
Keith made a motion?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. Next, next we have public health initiative position listed as a non-exempt position. Tara, did you hear?
Chris and I have talked about this a few times. The, you may go ahead. My current position is a supervisor position according to the job descriptions. The job description that you're referring to here is currently listed as exempt if you look at the job description, if you pull it today. That was something that was supposed to be fixed back when the job descriptions were rewritten. So I'm just gonna take your, take you back just a little bit. When I held what is now Mallory's position, it was a non-exempt position, it's always been that way. When the job descriptions were changed or updated, that was an error that we noticed, and I am as aware, that it was supposed to be fixed. We did not notice that it was not changed until the last meeting, so.
Yes, in the personnel policy handbook, it has seven positions listed as exempt. And it just states public health nurse, it doesn't say public health nurse supervisor. So when we brought, I brought that last week trying to clarify who was our last month's salary position, and who was hourly, hourly, trying to clear that up. Most of these physicians here are considered your supervisory physician. And we put both, with it just saying public health nurse, we put Tara and Mallory's position in there. So where it, Mallory's should be a non-exempt.
I'm just saying, that's what it's always been, if you guys wanna change it, that's totally up to you, but that is not what was in the job description.
What does the handbook say for these positions?
The handbook, the personnel handbook, which I talked to Chris about it, needs updated according to the new job descriptions. Kelly, I think I mentioned this to you as well. The job descriptions, when they were reworded a little bit or changed, it no longer matches our handbook, which creates a little bit of confusion. And I think you mentioned that if they just read that, they probably automatically assumed that they were both exempt position. It makes me zero difference, I just don't know what you want us to do going forward, because as you are also aware, at the last meeting, when you guys took a vote, you said that exempt employees, at that meeting, you voted that exempt employees no longer turn in a timesheet, and that we are not eligible for vacation, I believe, and you also said.
No, comp time, you're not eligible for vacation.
There's a little bit of verbiage in there about our vacation time too, which we can go back and watch it. But if you're saying we're not eligible for comp time, that also goes against what's in the handbook, so.
And that's why I pointed out.
For the non-exempt position.
She was saying that an exempt physician, so I'm gonna use myself, should not get comp time. I think you made the comment that, yeah, someone needs to tell her that she can't have comp time.
But you don't have comp time.
I have zero comp hours, but I am eligible to earn it according to the handbook. So we just need to figure out which is which, and tell me, you know, what, what we're gonna do, because.
After talking to you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I did some research. So I went to the auditor's office, and I tried to pull the old job descriptions and then the new job descriptions. And you're right, there is, the title changes are a little different.
Absolutely.
And then it was non-exempt and then exempt for your, well, no, Mallory's, I guess, your old position. Yeah, so it was, it was originally, correct me if I'm wrong, public health initiative nurse, and then it got changed to public health nurse.
Yes.
And I think you said that you didn't know, maybe Wagner Shilly did this, or?
When we talked about job titles, there was a conversation that we had, public health nurse is the title on both of the doors outside of the office. It created confusion going forward, because it's like, our handbook says one thing, our office door says another. Isn't that big of a deal? I don't know, but we are addressed as public health nurses. So when we, I'm getting ready to talk about our immunization grant, sometimes that physician was labeled public health immunization nurse, because that is that physician's baby. So I don't, I think it creates a little bit of confusion, and maybe that's where the confusion came from with Lao, or, sorry, not Lao, but. Yeah, I think that's where the confusion came from. I just need to know what we're doing going forward.
Which is exactly what I had done last week, or last month, we had the confusion where the job description said one thing, and the personnel handbook said another. And then you guys had, based on the personnel policy, where it has these seven positions listed as exempt, those are mostly, or those are all considered supervisory positions. So, but we had Mallory in under that, because it just said public health nurse, not public health nurse supervisor. So we just want some clarification as to.
Does the handbook need updated according to our job descriptions? If that's the case, then that's fine, we just don't really know where we stand right now.
It sounds like it, but I don't know. You just can't change descriptions and, and exempt.
So this going from your, well, I say you, it's Mallory, going from non-exempt to exempt?
Was a mistake. It, when I say mistake, it means if that physician, I had held that position for five-ish years, it was always non-exempt. This physician was always exempt, if you wanna change it.
Well, I think it's just in, in Chris's defense, she thought, because it said public health nurse, so. I understand it better now, I abstained the last meeting, because when we talked, I went and did some more research, and I tried to find out.
Yeah, and maybe it.
Well, we have a handbook committee to, to look over that, and Kelly's on that, so.
I'm ready for one.
Yeah, I mean, they should clarify it.
Yeah, I don't know if maybe the handbook is just out of date, but, you know, as far as the verbiage there, now that we've paid to have different job descriptions, or our job descriptions updated, I don't know. But I just wanted to know, kind of going forward, what the plan was.
Sounds like we need the handbook committee to meet, and they'll get back with you, and we'll get resolved. Don't think it's a real big deal, I don't think.
It's not, the only thing I think that probably was the biggest deal was the fact that it was voted on and, and stated that an exempt employee is not eligible for comp time, when the handbook states otherwise. So I just need somebody to tell me what we are supposed to do.
Right.
Comp time for us right now is not an issue, but I can't promise that we're not gonna have a COVID or TV situation tomorrow. I can't guarantee that, and I need to know.
For the future.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know, so I just wanna know that.
The verbiage in both these books is conflicting.
It is.
It's very conflicting, and that's what I brought, that, because in the personnel policy handbook, it states that, that exempt employees are not, yeah.
That page says are not, if you flip to the other one, it says an exempt employee, 35 hours plus, it is hour per hour. A non-exempt employee, 35 to 40 is hour per hour, 40 plus is hour for 1.5 hours. That's the difference. So we just need to kind of update one or the other, so that we know what we're doing too.
Tara, I have a, not that it matters for this position, but your current position, whenever I looked up the old original, I didn't put this X on it, that's how it was. The original job description, it said it was non-exempt, and then the new one says you're exempt. In this current position, was Sarah ever non-exempt?
Sarah was always an exempt employee.
I know, it just, it wasn't, it says non-exempt. So I don't know. This is just the one I pulled.
I'll make sure you have the current updated one.
Well, I have the, I have the current updated. I'm just talking about the old, original one.
I got you. I cannot speak a lot on that, because I'm gonna be honest, I never saw Sarah's job description. My current job description, I believe I could probably pull it, but it is listed as exempt. Well, the one that I was given, yeah, and the one that I was given to review, like, hey, if you guys do extra services and you need to add to it, please do so, it was listed as exempt. Mallory's was listed as non-exempt.
And it's no fault to you, because I, I think, I don't know how this was done last year.
Sure.
But I remember conversations as a citizen, that they wanted departments to go through their job descriptions, add to it, mark out things. But did that ever come back to the council? Because technically, in the handbook also, it says the council has to have the final approval of that. It really should have came back, in my mind, everyone's, not just yours, not taking on you, should have came back to the council for final approval, and then it sent, was sent to Wagner Shilly. Really, that's how I feel like it should have been, but.
I have no idea.
Yeah. I was just asking David.
Yeah, I don't think it did, did it pan? I don't remember.
I'm just, I mean, if we're following the handbook, it says the county council has to make all those change, you know, approve the changes. So I did see something, there was something where, let me find it, supervisors had to sign off on it, I guess? Did you have to sign off on, like, your department, or?
At that time, when we redid, or I don't wanna say redid, when we were given our current job descriptions, and we were asked to say, hey, if you're doing something that's not on here, put it on there, I was not in this position.
Oh.
So I can't speak on that. I took this.
Oh, it was this, it looked like this, it says County of Perry, you know, if there was changes, then the supervisor signs off, and I didn't know if the council ever got these or saw them.
I don't know, I, I can't speak on that, because I've not seen that paper.
I don't think so.
Sounds like there's housekeeping.
Probably, it's, maybe it's just matching one to the other. I just wanna make sure everybody knows, that the comp time issue is, I followed what was in the handbook. So if what was voted on is different than what's in the handbook, please let somebody know, because I can't guarantee what tomorrow will bring.
Yeah, because if they change the handbook, then the council has to vote on it.
I think it's a good idea to send it to each department and let them line out, and then bring it back to the handbook, and then come size it up, and then get back with.
But then you've also got that, so.
But then you've also got that, so where are you going to go by? You've got this book, this Personnel Policy Handbook that Wagner did.
Well, that's where the Employee Handbook is, or Employee Policy Committee is going to have to draw the line.
So what did you just say? That Wagner Shilly has their own?
Wagner Shilly did this Personnel Policy Handbook, which is there.
It's separate than the one we have.
Is that the one that was updated in twenty twenty?
Wagner and Shilly didn't do.
No, I don't think so.
The Personnel Committee went through the handbook.
Which one did Wagner Shilly do?
They did, the Personnel Committee went through the handbook, send it to Wagner and Shilly.
I have that somewhere.
And give them, but the Personnel Committee is the one that actually did.
So we really just have one?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
No.
And it's updated.
You have two separate policies, one for us and one for hybrid.
That's what I thought.
But it's all combined into the one now.
Okay, so it looks like this.
Is that updated twenty twenty?
Yep, January first, twenty twenty. That's what I was going by whenever I was looking.
Me too.
So you're saying this is what's messed up?
Yep. Uh, it just doesn't, it does not match what our job descriptions now say. And it does not match what was voted on at the last meeting.
Okay. Now does, since this affected Mallory at the last meeting? I think we, I, I think I asked last time, yeah, how was she hired?
Situation too, which is another issue. You said you were going to get to it, you don't have to go into that now, but that is an issue as well.
Like what was she hired?
So Mallory was hired here in April. Um, I was in an exempt, uh, position by that point since February. When you told me that these changes in the job description took effect, when?
When they approved these, you talked about the change they approved where they've changed all public health nurses being that position.
When did that go into effect?
At the January third meeting.
Okay, so with that said, she was also hired in a non-exempt position, but now has been changed to exempt. Similar as me, I was hired in a non-exempt position and then moved to an exempt position.
You moved to a, yeah.
But hers.
I kind of wonder if this title change from Wagner Shilly, from public health initiative nurse to public health nurse, since they go by that, if they didn't, it didn't trigger that non-exempt to exempt and then.
They probably just read it and did what they did. But, and it's one way or the other, I guess we just need to know what exactly it is and make sure that we are following the handbook, which says exempt employees are eligible for one hour of comp time. Because that was stated at the last meeting that we are not eligible. And I just need to make sure we're doing that correctly. Are we following the handbook when it comes to that?
So the Personnel Policy Committee needs to meet, I think, and.
Yeah, there's, I have several questions about this. So I think it needs to be another update, you know, it's been three years.
Okay, then I'll just stay here. Um, so I don't know if everybody got time to read my email. I sent the council my email regarding the VFC immunization grant. I know you guys are the newest to us.
I appreciate you telling me the information.
Kelly, you and I, you and I talked about it a little bit whenever I met with you guys. Um, our VFC immunization grant is a grant that we have been fortunate enough, it is a very selective process. It is a very extenuous, uh, difficult progress, or process to apply. It's about a fifteen-page grant. Um, and VFC just means vaccines for children. When you think about a VFC immunization grant, you're talking about funding to help ensure that our underserved, underprivileged children in this community are taken care of. That they have access to vaccines, that they have, um, education and that we are not missing and anybody's falling through the cracks. This grant alone, since I have been here six or seven years, has grown our immunization program by leaps and bounds. Um, it funds, you know, equipment to make sure that our vaccines are stored properly. It funds maintenance for those refrigerators to make sure that we don't have a huge vaccine loss. When we are talking about, I don't know if any of you came to our back-to-school batches. We had several, we've partnered with the schools to have batches at the health department on their back-to-school nights. It makes all of those things possible amongst a whole other ask. Uh, the state always has about six to eight things that they want a health department to focus on. Like, hey, these are our state problems with immunizations. Do what you can to raise your, your percentages. And we are monitored quarterly by the state. Uh, we do have a turn-in quarterly reports. Um, and we have done very, very well. And this program has grown and I hope to keep growing it. So I'd like permission to apply for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four grant.
Do you know like how much the amount might be or that you're.
I don't know yet, so it's not up to anything. They just say, you know, please include whatever it's going to take to get, you saw the page.
Yeah.
Those first eight bullet points done. And I will tell you that a lot of these bullet points are very similar in what we have been working on the past several years. They continue to remain an issue. Uh, but when you think about health, health equity of this county, I don't know if any of you guys visited our tent drive-through. Uh, we were in a tent outside for nine weeks. I'm very proud of that. These girls work their sweats off, um, in all sorts of weather to ensure that our children, our elderly, uh, get access to vaccine without having to get an elderly parent out of the vehicle. Or, you know, kids maybe are more comfortable in that scenario. We pushed through, just so you're aware, our back-to-school batch, the one we have at the health department, we gave a hundred and seventy vaccines. We had reps from Vanderburgh County who said they were very impressed. On our back-to-school nights, we did a hundred and ninety. Nine weeks in the tent, we gave sixteen hundred vaccines. And I could not be more proud of the work that we have done, which is why I'm asking for permission to continue.
Do you know if all these vaccines are FDA-approved?
Are you, are you asking about COVID?
Yes.
Yes, we only, so we follow ACIP guidelines. So when you're talking about children, because that is what we are focused on here, we follow ACIP guidelines to the T.
Do you know there are congressional meetings going on now with how safe that vaccine is?
Sure, sure. And please know, we don't, we don't push anything. Our goal, I will spend time with a parent, I don't care how long, to answer any questions. That's not our goal. Our goal is if you want your child to be vaccinated, I want to make sure you have access to that.
Yeah, and if they have all the information, this vaccine, you know, because it's been out for a long time now. So they should have a lot of data on that, to know how effective it is.
Absolutely. And if we have somebody who has questions, we are always, I mean, we've got plenty of things to get them to.
So I know you mentioned Mallory is like a big part of the vaccine program. So does any of her salary come out of this or does she?
So this grant also funds, um, Gail Edwards, she is our, okay. Your official title is Immunization Coordinator.
In full, right.
She is fully paid by that. Um, this grant also funds extra hours for myself, Mallory and Donell, which is outside of health department hours.
Right.
Um, so when you think about our back-to-school batches, no drop time for that, none of that. During those hours, our main focus is running reminder recalls, which means we look at our county and we say, Addison Lucas, okay, she has missed a vaccine. Let's try to get in touch with that parent, find out what's going on. Are they concerned about this vaccine? Do they just not know that we're there, you know? And we follow up after that. Um, one of the biggest things that they are really pushing with this grant is health equity. Making sure that everybody in your county has access to vaccines and that there, if there is a gap or a burden, we are helping to ease that. And I feel like we have made huge progress with that. And I would like to continue it.
David, you ready for a motion?
Uh, one of the main reasons we asked you to come forward for these grants is especially important when there's salaries involved.
Sure.
Because the State Board of Accounts has made it, or it's always been a requirement that that all becomes a part of our salary bonus. That's why, it also helps us with budgeting, you know?
Sure, sure.
But that's one of the main reasons. And yours is probably one of the more important ones because.
It is.
You know, the, anyway.
I'll make the motion, we urge you to apply, appreciate it. And I've, I've used your tent drive-through before COVID vaccine booster.
Super easy, right?
Worked real well.
I mean, we were out there in rain and snow.
Allison Fair, Sue Carson, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero.
Thanks for how you did it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for all your department does.
Is there someone here?
Yes, me.
Oh, okay. Chris just pointed out, we forgot the, oh, I forgot the prosecutor's clean salary or clean for the offices.
So, um, in January, the contract for Caitlin Stein cleaning the prosecutor's office was tabled to look into, um, the possibility of, um, of, uh, um, researching liability and including this in her wages, just like with Kevin Herp. We did, um, for Workman's Comp where she had ever got hurt or anything, if something happened. Um, so, uh, the commissioners approved to renew this contract on Monday in the same capacity. Uh, right now, we pay her two hundred dollars a month, which is twenty-four hundred a year. Right now, she received, um, in twenty twenty-two, she received a ten ninety-nine for that twenty-four hundred. Um, so, uh, to add that into her wages, um, adding the twenty percent on to cover taxes and benefits. Um, so again, this will be on her W-2 and she'll be covered under Workman's Comp with that, since she is a full-time employee.
I like that situation much better.
I know you're talking about taking this out of the administrative salary or where?
No, this is, this is.
This is the prosecutor.
This is the prosecutor, yeah. Um, this paid out of the courthouse cleaning.
All right, yeah. So that's going to require additional transfer.
Unless Samantha's got the money somewhere.
I doubt it.
Just asking, just asking.
I already had a budget approved, but I don't know how it got approved. Because the, the amount that's in pre-trial, the version currently, doesn't cover what was allotted for, for the tough years. So I do not have any extra money for that. And it was already being paid, we're just moving it from where it's being paid so that there's not.
It's going to bump up a little bit with that twenty percent.
Yeah.
But that comes out of the cleaning, not out of anything. It comes out of the same fund that cleans cleaning services paid out of for courthouse cleaning.
Okay, when you're seeing these, where's the, uh, is that enough to cover the social security and the per?
The commissioner said twenty percent.
I guess it is, it should be.
Twenty percent should work.
It's going to be close.
Seven point seven and seven point six five, so. Randy must have worked on that.
Look at him, look at him smile. Appreciate it.
So we need, okay, need a motion.
Four hundred plus twenty times.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I need to abstain there.
One abstention. So we, twenty-four hundred, it'll be twenty-eight eighty, you're all abstaining, Chris.
Yeah. Who first, who was the first to ask your motion?
So Chris, that'll be the same thing, that the, the stipend with the description will be attached to her.
But it won't be tied to her position.
Description, but it's an attachment. She has that responsibility also for the extra, okay? On financing.
Okay, Keith, I'll make the motion. Keith made the motion, second by.
Me, Kelly.
Kelly, Allison Fair, Sue Carson, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero.
Paul.
Oh, Paul's, where is he, Paul abstaining? Okay, the next item is our resolution of the Perry County Council to renew policies and procedures of our decorum at meetings. We've been doing this for a few years. I think we started, and Luke Thomas is here. But, uh, I've given copies to everybody at the last meeting. And basically, we're just renewing this, uh, it's the way we are to conduct, the way you're to conduct yourself at the meeting. You know, we follow, we try to follow Robert's rules and order. I don't do the best job, but, uh, that's why I have this scab now.
Need to, need to correct the black president back here.
The last page is still corrected, I'm on that.
David, does it actually say, I didn't, Robert's rules of order?
I think it does.
Yeah, somewhere in there, I saw it, it's right here.
Maybe we follow Bob's rules.
But we have this to be signed and I did get your name changed also. So I guess I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution once again.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll say.
Allison Fair, Sue Carson, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. And if anybody wants a copy of this, feel free to ask. Next, we have, uh, American Rescue Plan, ARP distributions. I think, Randy, do you want to talk about that a little?
Sure, well, I'm here.
You did a pretty good job at the commissioners meeting, so.
You were at the commissioners meeting. You heard it, you're going to hear it again. We met, what we are is an advisory committee. We have no control over any of these funds. We try to do the best job we can to get the most out of the benefit for the community. And I have a list here that we're asking for your approval so we can distribute this money. Uh, the first one we have on the list is Forest Canton, which is the subdivision, uh, out here next to the hospital. They've been working on, and we're proposing providing three hundred thousand dollars of support for that group to get that completed. The second one we have on our list here that the committee wants to recommend is the Derby Community Facility out there. They're in the process, they just recently built a dock and, uh, they want to have further enhancements to their park. And one of the things that our committee requested of them is that they seek additional grant opportunities because our funds through ARP can be used as matching. Uh, I have reached out to Region Fifteen, there are opportunities out there. And, uh, that's the next step on this one here after approval. Perry County Highway Department came forward and if, if any of you around in years past, there were some times when it was a little short on money in the county. The highway department stepped up, they provided the funds, got the county through the hard times. Now Steve and his group are out there with a lot of wore-out equipment that needs to be replaced. Uh, he came forward and asked for support and the committee decided that three hundred thousand dollars, it's what he asked for slightly less than that. We decided, because the county does so much work through his department with the roads and everything, we wanted to support him. So the committee suggested appropriating three hundred thousand for his. Um, the Canton School Corporation came before the group and requested funding. And one of their projects was the Meyer Elementary School, which apparently is having some structural issues. Uh, it's the oldest active school, elementary school in the state of Indiana. And the group, because of its historical value and, and the fact that we don't necessarily want to lose another asset within our county, uh, decided to set aside a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that facility to make sure it stays, uh, suitable for use. One thing about that, because it is historic preservation, again, Region Fifteen, we're going to ask that they meet with them. There are grants out there and there are some very lucrative grants out there. So there's a potential for substantially more than this if they are accepted. Uh, we will have the request that they get an engineer involved with this and take bids, uh, competitive bids on completing that. The next one on our list is Antro. Antro came in and asked for, uh, money just to put a mapping system in, uh, and do a little study work on, on expansion of water lines. What the group did is they decided that, that water is so critical. Most people won't move to our county with the understanding they have to take their pickup truck twice a week and haul water to their home. And one of the key things we need within our community is roads. We need employees, we need people here. So we felt we wanted to set aside a substantial amount of money, again, that could be used towards Oprah Grants, USDA Grants, others that are out there so that we can push some water lines further out into the county. We've met with some of the people from, uh, from. We've met with some of the people from, uh, from the US government because of the obstacle of a forced service and the ground they own in between. And I'm hopeful we can get through some of those areas without costing us a fortune. But it is what it is because it's part of the county. But we, as a committee, decided to set aside $500,000 for them. That, again, contingent upon grants, matching grants, hopefully that can be expanded substantially more than that and move water into the county. The judge came in
I got a question on that, would that be used for infrastructure too then?
We decided staying as a group
Not just mapping?
When we turned around and she came in and wanted mapping and engineering studies and that, we decided, you know, we're tired of spending money doing a study, doing a study, doing a study. We want lines into the ground out there serving people, whatever we have to do in order to get that done. We can study things forever. But the critical thing is getting water into some of these areas and opening them up for development. So that's why we set substantially more money than they requested aside for them, because we think it's a critical need here in our county. Uh, the other thing, uh, the judge came in front of us, and she has security issues, which I really don't want to get into all of them. But clearly, she deals with some individuals at times that may be less than pleasant. And the way her system is set up currently, it's not very secure. She asked for 57,000 in funding, and we have talked as a group and probably will have to take additional steps. But we feel like her side is important, but it's like putting a lock on your front door and the back door's open. So we have the remainder of the building that we probably will need to address going forward. But at this time, it's strictly, she came in and requested the 57,000. The girls' youth softball group, they've been kind of ping ponged around different locations where they practice, store their equipment and, and, and do different things. It used to be down at one of the parks down in Haggardon Park, and now I think they're going over to Quanis Park. And what we, they came in and asked for funding to build them a practice facility and also a storage facility for girls' youth sports. And so we approved, or suggested, you guys will have to approve it, 81,000 to build that facility for them. The stipulations with that, that's Tell City property, we will have to get an agreement with Tell City for an extended period of time. And we talked about 20 years to make sure that we do not invest in a building on property the city owns. And we want to get them, with no problem, I'm sure, at least Chris is still here, that we're going to get, they're going to get it for 20 years. What we don't want to do is invest the money, build the building, and then the city determines they want to have another use for it. So that's something that we're going to have to make sure that they're comfortable with this building on this property for an extended period of time.
Hang on, Randy, we got a question here.
Just a minute. That's not girls' youth softball, that's high school.
It's girls' youth softball.
No.
It's all of them.
Yeah, it's all girls. It's not
The, the smaller girls up through the whole high
Everybody will be able to use it. But it's going to be built where the high school girls play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Over there. Yeah. Because we, we
We're not moving your girls.
No, 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 I, yeah.
Yeah.
Because sometimes during the winter, I know a lot of times they want to go in and practice and bat and things like this here. And we want that to be community available, because we had
Mainly it's meant for girls.
Girls.
Randy, did you okay this with the, did you okay this with commissioners with the stipulation that, that they, uh, have a contract or are
We will have to enter into an agreement so that they're comfortable
Did you pull it out first, or did you pull it out of yours, or did you
No, what we're doing right now, Stan, we have several stipulations that's required in this. One of them is that, uh, let me use Derby as an example. We, we will require them to meet with Region 15 to explore opportunities to multiply these funds through grants. There may or may not be at this time the availability, but we want them to seek those grants because if we could get a dollar, we can use these for match. So if we can get a dollar-for-dollar match, we can turn 50,000 into 100,000. We don't want to bypass those opportunities. So we're kind of, and, and they don't have a problem with it at all, but we're kind of trying to encourage them that they seek these grant opportunities, rather than we're the easy one just to give them 50,000. So we feel like if we could take the 50,000 to turn it into 100,000 for their park out there, it would be just such a plus.
So if we approve this, these funds that are set there, it'd be the stipulation, just like
In our last one, and David will remember
Which is your stipulation, basically?
In the last one, we entered into agreements with all of the people we funded, and it clearly identified what they were doing and what the requirements were. Uh, Tom Hauser signed it for the commissioners, David signed it for the council, and then whomever the designated person was from the entity bidding the funds also signed it. Part of this was set up so that we follow, they understand treasury has rules. And if we're audited and they use the funds outside of what they represented they were going to use them for, there would be consequences, and they would be responsible for. So in that same type of agreement, other than the inter-county type things where we're responsible, responsible for them anyway, you know, there will be those agreements in place. Uh, it's going to be that example, Steve out there with his money, it's going to be a commissioner approval. We'll go through the bidding process, as we would anything else. He'll come in with his quotes, and then we'll go to issue the money. It won't be just a blanket without any oversight, so that's how, that's how the county
Stan, those agreements were provided. Right.
Yeah, they were, Baker, Telly, Telly put them together. Uh, the next one, it's Tell City School Corporation, had some transportation needs, uh, they came before us, and we decided it's only a portion of what their needs are, but we decided that that's a valid thing because of the amount of kids associated with it. And, uh, we provided $100,000 for them. We have a couple, and I don't think it's on your list, with Troy, um, fire, parks, that we're sorting through the details yet on those. Prosecutor's office, Teresa Canador, came, uh, before us. She switched from being the county administrator to there, only to find that a lot of the computer systems, the cop years, and let me fill in the blanks, is dated, and I mean really dated. Uh, old operating software and everything. And we had taken money out of ARP when we did the Lao system and upgraded, uh, most of the county offices to get those up, and the prosecutor's office is still well behind. Uh, we set aside $25,000 to bring that up. They'll be into the same thing as far as, uh, bidding out, uh, their needs. The hospital came before us. This was an area where they wanted to equip a room, and I believe it's negative pressure, so that in the event you have COVID or some other type disease similar, that they could move you into that room and you wouldn't contaminate the entire building. The group thought, when we look at back at ARP funds, and it was all generated with COVID in mind, the group thought this is what the money was actually set down for. So the hospital, the improvement was $450,000. They asked us for 150,000 of the project, and that's something we recommend. Uh, the others that I had on my list are our phone system and the, uh, and the courthouse LEDs, which you've already approved, so.
What stance on them two projects? Are they lighting system, LED lighting, so they
The LED lighting system, they have the equipment and that, did they ever come to you, Alan? What he's going to, I'm going to have to follow up with him. What they were going to do, Alan has some, uh, bulbs that are kind of on the yellowish side, and we're going to do a room over there with the new 5,000 K bulbs to make sure he's comfortable with the color before we commit to the color. And the color can be any color we want, these here are probably 5,000 in here, four at least, as far as color.
Put five in here, it's going to be all different.
So, but, uh, that's where that project is.
Is there a deadline on that?
They were going to come over during Christmas, I'm going to have to reach out and see where they're
May electric was?
Uh, yep, during Christmas and New Year's, they had some free time, and they talked about doing it.
Phones finished, isn't it? Pretty much.
The phones are all done. We are trying, we are trying to get AT&amp;T to release our 547 numbers, which they've promised since the first of December. And yet of today, we've got the courthouse rolled, and the remainder of them is waiting for them to, uh, to let those numbers go. So I don't know, it has been an ongoing stressful event, so. The next date is the first part of February, so.
Okay, back to, uh, my question
Yep.
Before David rudely interrupted it. When's the courthouse going to see the LED light?
I'll have to call to find out. They should be doing them
I mean, I thought, you know, if they had questions, couldn't decide on the jail
I think it's probably a labor thing.
This year was a goal, and they could do this this Christmas.
They've got the whole thing, so I'll have to reach out to them.
Randy, can you, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt him.
No, you can.
Um, can you talk about, I know that Cannleton's on here, and that Cannleton School Corporation, Tell City School Corporation, and I was at the commissioner meeting, and you also mentioned that Perry Central, there was some funding for the first round. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that
See, I always leave that out, and it takes somebody to remind me. Uh, we had a first round with this here, and it was mental health, small business, and nonprofits. And, um, at that time, neither one of the, either Cannleton or Tell City applied for any funds. And Perry Central, through their, uh, one of their vendors, did apply, and they were funded for that. So that's, that's a need, was met for them when they came in, so.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Yes.
You first applied for that and put us in that position and never talked us about it.
We didn't, we didn't put them in. They were all electronically done, it was set up
No, I'm saying you first, that you awarded you first $20,000, and I think that they said they were going to be programming at Perry Central, but what I'm saying is we never had a conversation with them.
And so, did they ever do it?
Not yet, to my knowledge. And so I'm going to follow up with, it's a good organization, so I feel like there's just a communication breakdown, but I just wanted to clarify that we did not ask Youth First to write a grant on our cap. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, so, with that said, the representation, is that, and they signed an agreement with the county to do that? So if you have any issues, uh, let us know, because that's, that's, that is what the representative did.
Just 1.6 million here, this is the second round of dispersments.
Yeah.
Uh, well, what was the total amount of ARP when it comes to the county?
A little over 3.7 million.
Well, is this, will it be one more disbursement round here, or is this
What we have right now is that we had allocated, I'm lucky I put this paper along. We have already appropriated 706,000. If you appropriate this, it's about 1.7 million plus, uh, we're going to be, we're going to be close to 2 million once we get down to probably Troy. Uh, depending, they have some grant opportunities also where they can do some matching for 55% of the cost. So if we can get work through that, it'll be less. But, uh, let's say for instance, we're going to have about 2.7 million allocated, maybe slightly more than that, which will remain us about a million to 900,000 in that range left yet to be appropriated. Now, what we do have is, uh, is till, uh, the end of '24 to get it allocated, and then it has to be spent by the end of '26. So we do have some time, uh, we have some things we're kind of hanging out, like the water. We don't know exactly where that's going to go, the Forest Canton out there. Hopefully their funds and everything, as they got a plan to all come through. There's going to be a tremendous amount of money. I'm anticipating with this, uh, rebuild act, whatever, these several trillion dollars that the federal government has put out there, I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities. And if we can take these funds for the matching part of some of those grants, it takes the pressure off the entity that's doing it, and then we can bring back lots of dollars to the county. That's my hope, uh, that we can do something like that with what's left, so. Kelly, do you have another question, or did I answer everything?
I think that's it. You mentioned something about Perry County Memorial Hospital had a $450,000, is that their total renovation that they're doing right now? Or is that just for the room?
Has nothing to do with what they're doing right now. That's a, that's another half million dollar project, that's totally separate, half a million dollar project.
So this 150 is for a $450 separate project, or 450,000?
Uh, he came in and said his whole entire project was 450. And I think how he structured it, if I remember correctly, 150,000 was coming from a USDA grant. 150,000 was coming from the hospital, and 150,000 he was asking for ARP funds in order to put this together.
The plans that he submitted, or that, uh, his secretary, I guess, sent, emailed us, didn't, all the, the work for the, that he was asking for then was totally separate from that, with the exception of a carport being built out the, like, south side of the building.
South.
That where the doctors go in usually, where the employees enter us.
I, I have one more question for, about the highway department, Steve, maybe you can help. That 300,000 that's in here?
Yes.
Um, I know at the commissioner meeting, there was some talk about a road, and there was a gentleman had a, a problem with grading, and there was a grader down. Is that going to be part of this 300,000 fixing it, or looking towards a used one or a new one?
What I am, one of the most done is that we get a maybo floor, a tractor with a maybo on it, and to solve that.
Okay.
And the cost to a grader, it's going to be
Okay. I was just curious, I, I know he said, or you had said that there was a problem with it.
The grader that was down was only five years old, and we think it's fixed now, we hope it is.
Okay.
We still got one broken down.
The one, the one that's still broke down is the one you can't get parts for.
Right.
The one that you just got fixed is the one that was just barely out of warranty
Right.
that they helped you out on.
Okay. And as Steve said before, he, he spends all that time, all that money with the salt, everything he does, four days later, it doesn't matter. But I don't know how we get around it.
And one more thing about the Tell City Transportation, um, that $100,000 is about a third of
It's not even a third of it.
Yeah, it's a little less than a third.
Their, their thing was maybe 325,000 or something like that.
But if they don't get the other funding or can't find it, then this just reverts back, or?
Well, that's with our stipulation on everything. Let's, let's just pick anyone out, let's take Tell City for instance. Let's say they are, we're allocating the money, we're not going to write them a check
Right.
and say, here's $100,000 to use as you please. It's the same with the agreement, they're going to have to, uh, do what they said they proposed to do.
In some timeframe, right, because
Well, we're underneath this timeframe here, we've got, we've got it allocated, if you approve it, uh, they've got an opportunity to get it done by '26. But, uh, if we get to that point there and they haven't done anything, we'll claw it back, I'm sure.
I didn't know if there needed to be a timeframe on there to find anything.
We're hoping that everybody steps up and gets these projects done.
If you take that back, you have to have it expended by '26 or allocate, don't you?
Well, because you remember when we went to being a government entity?
Oh.
It's lost.
That's
Yeah.
It's okay.
We can take, we could actually take this money if we chose to put it into the county coffers today and not spend the dime of it. We can do that, we legally can. Ethically, I don't think we should.
No.
If we can, so, that's, that's what we
With the heatiness taking over the hospital, is that going, that going to take any of this money?
I don't know that anybody knows that answer yet. That's, I think we're waiting for the details on that. If you're done with me, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, because we need to have an approval, although if you're going to have a rejection, so we're going.
Do we do this all at once?
No, we want to make you sweat.
Because I've got abstain from one, and I'm against another.
We'll do many pitches? We'll do many pitches?
Let's just do it all at once.
He doesn't want to
You don't want to do it all at once?
I do, but
I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just abstaining.
Well, I'll abstain from all of it.
Everyone does.
Do you want to do them all at once?
Yeah.
If that, if that enables him to still be able to abstain and vote no on what he wants to vote no on, yes.
Yeah. Got to have a motion.
Let's do, which ones do you want or against? We'll vote on that.
I've got abstain from the girls' softball building.
Okay.
Because I gave a bid for the electrical on it.
Okay.
And I'm not saying I got the job, but I got, I gave her the price.
You abstained from the girls' softball.
Somebody.
And which one are you against?
The hospital.
The hospital. Okay. So first of all, we're gonna vote on the Perry County Memorial Hospital. Somebody want to make a motion on that one?
I'll make a, I can't make a motion if I'm against. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all of us in favor of the allocation for Perry County Memorial Hospital, four hundred and fifty thousand? Signify saying aye.
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 Nay?
Nope.
So that's four ayes?
Four together.
And one nay. Okay, now we're gonna vote on the remaining?
You got the girls' softball building?
Huh? We're gonna vote them?
Yes.
Oh, we're gonna do the girls' softball? Well, you abstained from that anyway. Okay, we're doing the girls' softball.
We'll abstain from all of them.
All those, any motion to approve the girls' softball?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Paul, second by Stan. All of us in favor, signify saying aye.
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 Any abstain, anybody wanting to abstain?
I believe I'll abstain.
Okay, we have four ayes and one abstain. Now we're gonna vote on the rest of them.
So that would be four, zero, one, right?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to arrest them.
Do I have a second?
That caused some controversy.
You make a motion key to approve my?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Second by Cal.
Okay, she's got it.
Motion by Key, second by Kay. All of us in favor of the remaining, signify saying aye.
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 Motion carries, five, zero. One thing I probably need to mention, I think we have on agenda, is the Southwest Region Meeting at Honeyberg Event Center. I think it's on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh.
What is that?
Usually we have pretty good attendance at those.
Yeah, it's a regional, it's a regional meeting.
Conference, county?
County Council.
Would that one be?
So it's called Southwest Regional Conference?
They have like three to four, I think.
First I have one.
Yeah, it's in the associated county. I think it's on February twenty-seventh, still a Tuesday, I believe.
I can look that up and email you guys.
I emailed it to someone, I think it was Stan.
I may have misspoke, is it the Association of Indian Counties, or is it the Indian Association of County?
Is it A I C A?
Association of Indian Counties.
No, that's A I C, that's, that's in Indianapolis.
Is that what that one is?
I think so.
No.
It is?
There you go. Because there is, there is one, there is a regional that we talked about in Honeyberg.
Right.
And then there's the A I C one, the big one, which is commissioners, council, and everybody.
That's like February seventh or something, that's in Indianapolis.
Yeah, yeah, that may be February.
February seventh and eighth, because they have.
I don't think we budgeted anything to go up there.
We have the Indian Resources Training up there.
Oh, really?
Well, Indian Resources one day, then A I C's the next day.
Unless you don't have, I don't hear a term.
We have the, one more thing.
What's that?
Have the lighting.
Oh, discussion of audio/video for commissioners' room. I guess that comes back to Randy.
That's why I'm here. Okay, we, we've got quite a few people tuning into these things, watching them other times, those that can't participate. Indiana state law now allows people that serve on these boards, if they can be heard and seen, they can participate remotely. So this is where I'm bringing this suggestion forward, that we replace that piece of equipment with a fixed camera that will take this in. It's a programmable one where you can actually, if you want to shrink it down for the commissioners, because it's a smaller body, you can, as program one. You can expand it for your group, program two, or however we want to address it. It's simplified. I didn't say this at the commissioners' meeting, but it'll be so that we don't have to have anyone go through the whole process to take a meeting, record it, and upload it. It will replace a lot of these microphones, we'll keep only four in here. The rest of them, this one will be gone, that squeaks regularly. And we'll put a new system in to pick up audio substantially better, not only for those that view it online, but those in the audience. We're proposing putting a projector in here that will shine to that wall. That one will be gone. That one will have both audio/video for those attending the meeting remotely. And it can be incorporated in the video so that not only you're here, but a missing member is there, and it's incorporated in the video that's uploaded. So we'll have that. It'll be stored in a cabinet and locked so that we don't have people constantly, once we get it tuned in, to have or we want it.
Where's the cabinet?
You have to be determined, you've got to okay it first. But that, that's what we're proposing because we feel like it's a definite plus. We'd want, we would like to get more community involvement. I know you had a room full tonight, I hope that we have a room full every night. Because the more we have input from people in our community, I think we're gonna get better results. What I suggested at the commissioners' meeting is that if we make this investment, it will not be inexpensive, I don't know what it'll be, but it will not be inexpensive. But if we make the investment, that we bring these public meetings that have tax dollars involved with them to the courthouse, make it available so that anyone can view government at its best. And I think for us to invest substantial dollars into something like this, we need to both be on board, commissioners and council, to bring these meetings back into this room.
Will all the meetings be categorized and stored so you can go back to look at a meeting from October of two thousand nineteen or whatever?
The computer system that runs this here is rather sophisticated and fast. It's gonna process all the frames, brings it up, uploading. We're gonna have a much, much better system. You'll be able to hear people, you'll be able to see people. We are gonna archive all those meetings. So not only will we have minutes, we'll have archives of the audio/video. So it'll make it a real tool for anyone that wants to go back and see exactly what the decision was, what was said.
Well, I think it's a very good thing, and just me and tonight's a good example. They're two hours. The minutes that Chris prepares is just a summary of previous meetings. This here is word by word, verbatim of what was said. And that way, anybody go back and look it up, you know, I think a good idea.
And then it also gives people, I know I've set up here before as an example. I thought that Perry Central had reached out to a provider. Now I just found out they didn't. If they're capable of watching me make a statement like that, I can get a phone call and say that's incorrect. I want to make sure that I'm correct when I say something like that. If it's said in a meeting, it's never recorded on the minutes, it just is lost. So we've lost the fact that I want to make sure that happens. So now I know.
Well, I agree.
But she's not gonna be here at every minute to hear me say things like that. And that's why I think it really helps our community if we do get this system up, get it operating, and we, you know, make it readily available to everybody.
Hey Randy, is that something the ARP monies could be used?
Potentially, we'd have to go in front of the board and ask them about something like this.
I have no idea in the budget, you know, how.
I, I get it. What I'm proposing right now is if you are okay with it, we have specifications, and I intend to put out an RFP. We're gonna open it up and let people bid on it. We're not gonna just hand it to somebody. And we'll see where we go. I don't know what the price will be. And at that point, we'll come back and we'll say, is it acceptable? And how are we gonna fund it?
So we're just.
We just want you either, I don't want to send out an ARP and waste vendors' time when you have no intention of doing it. You know, now if it's phenomenally expensive, I'm probably on board with you. Whoa, but.
Wonder if we can get German American to pay for it like they do, you know, signs in front of schools, like they put on cameras in front of. Advertise, yeah.
I actually had two people reach out to me after the last meeting, the January Heard County Council meeting, and they regularly watch these meetings. And they said they had a problems hearing, everybody, and so the speakers, the audio, all of that stuff will make a difference, I believe. I told them, just hold on, maybe something will be worked out.
We went through a commissioners' meeting, and there were reverberation in that and there.
Yeah, it was echoing and.
It was, oh, I'd have turned it off.
But I, I actually, I utilize the YouTube channel a lot and the archived videos because I can always go back and reference something, just like there was a question today that I couldn't find, and I had asked Chris about, but I went back into the January meeting of two thousand twenty-two, and it was very clear who said what and what it was, the intention was. And so it really cleared up a lot of things, so I think it's very beneficial.
And what my hope is, because, you know, we all dropped into that going to the armory during the election period of time. That's another issue at some point. I would like to see if we do get a sophisticated system in here, that we maintain this facility and utilize it even through those election periods. But we have to address early voting in some fashion. I don't have that answer, but.
I think it's really important that it's user-friendly because maybe not everybody on the boards and committees who might use this room to broadcast their meetings, it can't be overly complicated.
The vision right now, Kelly, is that the controls that will sit outside of the cabinets you can have access to will take four steps. One, starting it, and the other one stopping it, and the other one is uploading it to get the process. So it should be an extremely simplified process so that when, first of all, Chris spends plenty of time already at the courthouse. You can't ask her and her group to now be here at every meeting that happens to run this camera system. So we want to make it user-friendly enough that any organization with limited skills can read a piece of paper and operate it. And then if it works very well for us, there's all kinds of training, opportunities that can be used for it, potentially save us some drive time. And if it really works well and the community has a need for it in some unknown reason, I'm for opening the courthouse up, it's the taxpayers' building.
I'm all in.
And let them use it. So, I mean, we want to get our community on board, so what we do.
I'd like to make a motion to pursue the RFP, oh, sorry.
I've got a question though, or a statement or something. You said like if somebody can't be here, they can be here on the screen. I want a policy rolled up that they're not vacationing in Florida for six months out of a year because they can zoom us in on the meetings. Especially if they're elected official. I just, I think we need to have policies rolled up that way.
We have.
You blocked it out.
I understand.
I understand during COVID, a lot of this stuff was done. But I also understand.
What we don't want to do is necessarily have a meeting and say, unless you're retired and don't have a commitment with your job. For instance, we have one gentleman serving on a board that's an airplane pilot. Very nice fellow, knowledgeable. He can't necessarily make every meeting because he can't control the schedule. But he can in most cases participate if we can allow him to come in. He's an asset. He's a younger fellow. He's made an investment in our community, and if we can accommodate him so he can participate, by all means, we don't want to shut it down. Now, I understand your point. Some of these committees have kind of created their own, if you haven't showed up to three meetings, you know, you need to reconsider for someone else to take your position. The county in most cases doesn't have that in their requirement. And I'm not so sure it's not a bad thing. Because when we do put somebody on the board, we want them to participate. We want them to be active. We want them to be informed.
We also want them to where people can contact them.
Absolutely.
If they're in Florida and I can't contact them.
I, I see your point.
Or wherever, you know.
Won't that be just other policies that have to be put in place?
That's outside of the system.
That's outside.
I have an idea of what he's saying, but I think there needs to be policies rolled up to control this idea.
Yeah, you know, I wouldn't be for voting by proxy either, you know.
Well, it could require an ordinance or something.
But it would have to be.
Each one of these, I mean, we need to look, you're talking about your policy handbook. We've got a lot to look at.
Yeah.
Because we haven't looked at a lot of that in years.
No doubt.
Well, I'd make a motion to be supportive of the efforts to allow at least an RFP to be submitted to see what the cost is.
Yeah, I'd go along with that.
Is that what you're looking for? I mean, is that?
We just want to get it out on bids, as long as you're, you know, comfortable with the concept.
Okay, Kelly, make a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All second, all of us in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Motion carries, five, zero. Thanks, Randy. Anything else?
Motion.
I don't, I don't mind.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Paul, second by.
Second, second. Okay, I'll second.
All of us in favor, say aye. Motion carries.